I'm ready whenever you want.
All right. It is six P M. On Tuesday, March twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five. We are going to open the administrative board meeting. You do roll call, please.
I have trustees Chris Amples.
Here.
John Talbot.
Here.
Jen Christensen.
Here.
Bill Motisi.
Here.
Nathan Mas.
Here.
Patrick Garland.
Here.
President Rick Wurum.
Here.
Treasurer Brenda Onavani.
I clerk Sandy Mazin here. Public Works Supervisor Brett Fergie.
Here.
Parks Lead Brody Cook.
Here.
Engineer Matt Hanson.
Here.
All right. Today on the consent agenda, we have three items. February twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five Administrative Board Meeting Minutes is number one. Number two is Bill's payable warrant list dated March twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five for a total of sixty nine thousand, one hundred fourteen dollars and twenty seven cents. Item three, ordinance number twenty five dash zero eight, an ordinance authorizing disposal of personal property owned by the Village of Davis Junction. Three, weed eater string trimmers. At this time, we have the board members wish to remove any of those three items for further discussion. If not, we'll entertain the first motion.
I'm going to place agenda item, um, one, two, and three inclusively as consent agenda items. Further, I think that all items be considered together on the consent agenda.
Second.
Jen makes a motion to place items one through three inclusively as consent agenda. Nathan seconds. Roll call, please.
Jen?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Nathan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Motion passes six oh two. entertain the second motion.
I'm going to adopt items one, two, and three inclusively on the consent agenda in a single unit. The omniscient procedures specified in the municipal code.
Second.
Jen makes a motion to adopt items one through three inclusively as consent agenda. Nathan again seconds. Roll call, please.
Bill?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Nathan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jen?
Yeah.
All right. We do. We don't even have an item D on this meeting.
Yeah.
We've never used it.
Consensus.
All right. We will move on to the courts officer from me. We still do not have anybody who wants to step up and take the planning zoning commission chairperson role, even though Charles did us a favor by putting it out there. You can do it again. It's old news now. All right. Um, we have discussion and possible award. If somebody can make a motion, we can go into discussion.
The motion language is on the T V if somebody needs it.
Okay.
Somebody. I just need somebody to make a motion. Rick cannot make that.
Make a motion.
Okay. Motion to award bid of rebuild downtown the main street capital grant gateway subdivision infrastructure improvement project to Fisher excavating the amount of one million, nine hundred ninety eight thousand, nine hundred sixty one dollars and thirty five cents.
Second.
Oh, Patrick makes a motion to to award the bill bid with rebuild downtowns and main street capital grant gateway subdivision infrastructure improvement project to Fisher excavating the amount of one million, nine hundred ninety eight thousand, nine hundred sixty one dollars and thirty five cents. Nathan seconds. Any discussion on that ordinance or that bid awarded?
Just, just on the total price tag. The grant is three million. So we're on the two million.
Yeah, the grant is, yeah, but the single sheet that I handed out to everybody, Dale's got that in his recommendation for both of them. I just thought it'd be best to, I added a couple of lines to it at the bottom. I really didn't change what was in your packet and stuff there other than that bottom box there and stuff there. So we had the, you go all the way, you know, we've got the breakouts of the construction up at the top for each uh, contract. So you can kind of see there at the top, construction wise, you know, we're, we're about a million dollars over the, the grant, actual grant budget and stuff there. And then the engineering was about a hundred thousand over, uh, based off of some of the things we had to do with, with I got to get our approvals and stuff there. So the total project budget down at the bottom where we had the grant budget was about almost four million bucks. We're at five million, one, five million, one hundred twenty seven thousand roughly currently. Uh, the, the grant is for three million dollars. Um, I did check, you know, the village has paid to date, uh, three hundred seventy eight thousand dollars roughly for, you know, engineering to get to this point and the plating work. Um, so the balance really, you know, what you're looking at for your budgeting purposes for F Y twenty twenty six is about one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, well, we're, our, our portion is would have been two million, one hundred twenty seven thousand plus change.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes.
Did we factor through that? Is this because of the seven fifty?
No, I, I think there's, there's, you know, there's some factors that have gone into it, you know, and stuff. I, I went through the detailed estimates and stuff for the, the infrastructure wasn't, wasn't as, wasn't as bad. Um, uh, the, the real, the, the big items in there was really storm sewer. Uh, when we did the final analysis, we did have, you know, about two hundred and seventy feet more of storm sewer and about four more inlets in the public infrastructure part, but we did increase some of the storm sewer sizing. So about half of the overage on, on the infrastructure was just the, the storm sewer items. The other items were, there was, the, the only other big item, uh, as far as quantities that we estimated was, was the aggregate base course. We had about twenty eight hundred tons more in aggregate base course than what we had in our, our budget. Uh, so those two items were really the, the biggest items. Uh, the, the other items that were, you kind of take a look at the breakdown, it was really just a function of more unit prices going up from what we had in the grant. Yeah, yeah. So.
Year to length.
I mean, it took about a year and a half to get the agreement.
We applied for the grant at the end of twenty one. So that's when we actually applied for, for the grant. So, you know, maybe say twenty two or three years into the, into the process right now, between actually applying for the grant and actually getting ready to start construction.
But hell is up the way with that agreement.
That agreement.
Part of it was the agreement, waiting for that. And then the other one was, you know, you know, we're still going over hurdles with, with I dot. We're making some final changes on, on right away and stuff that they wanted. I thought all that was settled, you know, and stuff, but.
Did it just over a million more than I thought.
Yeah. And, and the building, I mean, the building, we don't have a breakdown yet of, of the little bit for the other contract for the, for the site improvements. Um, you know, the, the only thing that went up significantly in quantity really was the, the building size went up by a, by a thousand square feet, but um, you know, we did, we have seen, I'll be honest, we have seen a, a, you know, pretty big increase in building construction, electrical, H V A C. So, you know, I'm, I'm guessing, you know, the, even our estimate that we put out prior to bid or our estimate for, for bidding purposes was higher than the, than the grant. And now is even the unit size for the core footage of the building with everything was, was higher, so.
That's it.
Any further discussion?
How are you, how are you planning? Our question, are we going?
Reserve.
Reserve. So we're not, we're not asking for a loan from anywhere. We're not, we're not straight cash payments.
Too late for that.
Although, nevermind. We have, I don't know.
I mean, we know that it's already out. We, we have.
Yep.
All right. It's three years of beautiful inflation.
Doesn't help. Doesn't like waiting.
Speed your government. Any further discussion? It's a lot of money. Roll call.
John?
Yes.
Nathan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jen?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Motion passes six ten.
There's the other one.
Yeah. I make a motion to award bid of rebuild downtowns and main street capital grant gateway subdivision lot one improvements project to center of construction group in your law of two million, three hundred ninety eight thousand dollars.
Second.
Andrew makes a motion to award the bid of the build, rebuild downtowns and main street capital grant gateway subdivision lot one. Move it.
Oh.
Improvements in the amount of
Sure.
Two billion, three hundred ninety eight thousand dollars. Thank you.
Let's do something.
Chris seconds. Is there any discussion on that bid? Other than it's really friggin' high.
It fell on once over us. We need to get it talking.
Yep.
It's too late himself.
Anything else?
Here's what it is.
Again, money. Roll call.
Nathan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Chris? Jen?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
Passes six eleven. I have nothing further. Move on to Sandy.
The only thing I have is my last call for signing up for the public hearing. If you plan on speaking, please sign in to the sheet right here in the center. That's all I got.
Brenda?
Um, I have Lori, your phone, Edward Jones. She's going to talk about our four fifty plan, our retirement plan, the town. Things going to be changed.
And I do have your stuff to put up on the screen too.
Oh, we just.
Oh, and I gave them all this summary too. So they've all seen that.
All right. Yeah, all the.
Okay.
Thank you all very much. My name is Lori Mulch. I'm a financial advisor with Edward Jones and partner with Anthony Rowley and Rochelle. And we service your retirement plan. Uh, change, we were notified earlier this year that third party administrator, that's a compliance portion of your retirement plan that oversees the compliance. And we'll no longer service four, five, seven plans and we need to find a different, um, provider that will cease in June. A decision needs to be made, which also includes administration and signing agreements. Um, everything needs to be taken care of and the new plan needs to be administered by the end of June. Um, through my research and discussion with Brenda, I vetted a few, um, providers. Um, Hunter Benefits Group ultimately is who I'd like to continue, but move to as our name third party administrator.
Sorry, it's going up one. So we read that.
Hunter Benefits Group. So in that visual there, the first line, you see P P G. P P G is our current administrator. And just for visual reference, you're paying now versus what you could or will be paying. And it's approximately two hundred dollars additional directly to P P G per year that we pay. Excuse me, that is an error. I apologize. It's five hundred dollars per year. And Hunter Benefits Group, um, is the only service provider, um, that I found one that will provide comparable services and a comparable cost. Um, the other one, just for reference, um, map and charmant services was one of the others that I vetted. And they only do full compliance services, which is significantly more than what you utilize, what make use of now. Um, at an annual cost of about twenty, one hundred dollars a year. Hunter Benefits Group is located out of Chicago area. Um, ultimately, they will provide a very comparable level service with what you currently have and will fill the compliance portions necessary for the plan. Um, what I need approval from you all today is moving forward with Hunter Benefits Group as well as a requisition for sixteen hundred dollars in special star.
So I'm going to change your language just a tad for, for legal purposes. She needs a consensus from you guys that you would like to move forward with Hunter so that she can get the documentation from them for you guys to approve at the next meeting. Consent.
Yes.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Yeah. Ron, you ever go to the buses?
And I'll give this to you. I have one extra copy and then a copy with. Interesting. Only two weeks. That's totally fine. I just had a.
Thanks. Perfect. I, is there anything else we need from them or is this it?
That is all. So what I'll have here is I will provide a signed copy to them.
Okay.
So we find and get that back. And then what they're going to be doing is they're going to ensure comparable compatibility, comparable services to what they have now.
Okay.
And then we'll move forward. If there's any hiccups, um, Brenda will come and make a quick discussion with them.
Okay. I'll put it on the agenda for April eighth. So she'll have it due on April ninth. But if something changes before April eighth, just let Brenda know. We noted, updated before that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything further, Brenda?
I don't know.
All in the public here.
Yeah. Last call. Any, any sign in? Did you sign?
You know, I was.
Okay. Nobody signed into, did you just get a motion? It could be in the public hearing?
Make a motions could be in a public hearing? Is that all I need to say?
Mm hmm.
I didn't see.
Nope. That's good enough. No.
Okay.
Okay.
Nathan makes a motion to convene the public hearing. Chris seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. They started the public hearing at six sixteen P M. Should we give a little history as to why we even did this?
He's got a whole agenda thing.
All right. Um, tonight's public, uh, hearing, we're kind of in the last phase of, uh, kind of, uh, the planning approval stage through the I P A loan program. So to seek funding if the village wanted to pursue it, uh, about four years ago, the E P A came out what we call unsued community, uh, planning and construction grants. So there are two different grant programs that they had. So uh, what the village applied for was a planning grant. So the planning grant, all it does is takes a look at, you know, what improvements are, are needed to recover some of these, you know, unsued areas to the, to the east of the village. Um, and then part of that planning approval process at the end, you know, would get them eligible if they wanted to see actual construction grant funding. So, um, the what we're doing tonight is really just all planning related, uh, to kind of the unsued areas and stuff out by, uh, I thirty nine and, and seventy two. So uh, what we had to do was a couple of documents. We prepared this project plan report and submitted to the E P A back in June of twenty three. So that's how long it kind of took the E P A to get through the, uh, planning achievable process, you know, and stuff for it. So they take this, they review it, uh, for making sure it meets all design criteria. And we have to go and talk about, you know, private cost estimates, what the plans are, environmental impacts, you know, cost impact the users. So all that is in this particular report. Once they complete that report, um, the community, in this case, the village receives what they, uh, term a project summary and preliminary environmental impacts, uh, determination. So this document is basically just a summary of this much, this much larger, more detailed document. And the handout that you have before you, anybody has the, the handout for the agenda tonight, um, this is just a pretty much a summary of this document here. So, uh, we'll kind of go through it. If anybody, like I said, at the end has any questions, comments, uh, uh, we'll take those at that time. Uh, so project need, um, we identified, um, Sandy?
Not maybe.
Yes.
Pull up just the, the first map that I, yeah, I think people would see.
No, what happened here?
Very good. All right.
I think that's about as close as I can.
Yeah, yeah. But you can, we can slide with the need, need to and stuff, but, uh, uh, the, the topic need was, we had roughly this kind of counting about one hundred and forty two residential home three commercial businesses out by any area of, uh, of seventy two and thirty nine that are basically on, you know, individual private, uh, septic tanks and exo, exo systems. Um, most of these, uh, septic systems in these areas, you know, and stuff are, are generally either aging, you know, located in poor soil conditions and, and some of them are on, on smaller lots that, you know, you know, if you take a look at the current, um, public code, local code requirement, you know, might not meet the separation between well and septic and stuff out in those areas. So the proposed, uh, improvement that we're showing, you know, and stuff here tonight, uh, would, you know, you could serve all those, uh, residents and and businesses out there and, and the septic systems could be, you know, eventually abandoned. Uh, we broke the project into two phases. Uh, the first phase of the improvements would be, uh, construct along Bowland Street. So you want to zoom in, maybe start at the treatment.
Mm hmm.
Zoom in a bit. So we start at the, uh, uh, treatment land. You can kind of see the boundary of the, of the service area and stuff there. Um, the work along generally along seventy two at least out to pretty close to Fair Oaks Drive would all be, um, uh, what we call sanitary force mains. So in order to serve those areas and get it back to the village's wastewater treatment plant, which is open by two fifty one, um, we've got to pump that waste from there all the way to the clean treatment plant. And the proposed improvements, you could take a look at it, um, uh, the Timber Lane subdivision, uh, the Western Heights subdivision, Merriman Woods subdivision, and then the Noel's Edge subdivision are the ones that, uh, you know, could primarily, uh, primarily be served by the improvements. Plus, there's a Los Truck Stop out there and a couple of other, uh, commercial businesses out there that could be served off of the sanitary sewer improvements. Uh, so the first phase is basically along seventy two all the way to the on-ramp of, uh, northbound on-ramp on the east side of thirty nine. And then we will go north there, uh, along the on-ramp and then along the drainage way over to Eddie Road. That kind of takes us all the way up to the, um, Noel's Edge subdivision and stuff there. And then we'll construct sewers on Limestone Road, Hillside Drive, Eddie Road and Noel, Noel Road in the Noel's Edge subdivision. Um, the phase one improvements, um, we've got a main lift station that will go somewhere near, um, Fair Oaks Drive and seventy two. And that's what would collect all the waste and pump it to the, uh, treatment plant. And then we've got, um, uh, forty six hundred feet of eighteen inch sewer, almost six hundred feet of fifteen, thirty one hundred feet of twelve, fifty five hundred feet of eight inch and twenty one hundred feet of four inch diameter sewer service, forty eight manholes and almost eleven thousand feet of twelve inch, uh, sanitary force main. The phase two improvements, that would be primarily all the sewers. And then there's a small lift station just to be by the way, the groundways up there north on Fair, uh, Fair Oaks Drive north of, uh, seventy two and stuff there. But most of that would just be all sewer work in the Merriman Woods, Western Heights subdivision and the Timber Lane subdivision. These two improvements, like I said, we have a list, small list station, eleven thousand feet of eight inch sewer, uh, thirty one hundred feet of four inch, uh, sewer service, thirty four manholes and about fifteen hundred feet of four inch, uh, diameter sanitary sewer service or force main. And then the phase one and two private sanitary sewer service, one of the things that the E P A required us to do as part of the planning is they wanted to have us take a look at what it's going to take to get, you know, you know, unsued people onto the city or onto the village's sewer system. So we had to come up with cost estimates for work on the private property as well. So the phase one, two, uh, private sewer work would include uh, sanitary sewer line, uh, service on the private property from the property line to the septic tank and then the abandonment of the, of the septic tank system. Um, unfortunately, the only, the only problem with the work on the private property, this, this work is not eligible through the E P A revolving fund loan program. So it would have to be funded somehow locally. Uh, phase three, uh, cost estimate. So phase, uh, phase one, we've got the village improvements. That's basically everything in the public right away or easements there, uh, about seven point five million. Uh, the private property, uh, with about one point two million to do all the service work on the private property and abandon the septic tanks. And then the phase two improvements, uh, was just under four million dollars and the private property work was a little bit over one point six million dollars. Uh, project financing, um, in that table there, uh, we've got the private cost for, for the phase one, phase two for village and private property. And you can kind of see how it's being financed, potentially would be financed. Um, the project cost on phase one for the build portion would be, uh, seven million, five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. You know, if the village wanted to proceed and try to get, uh, uh, grant funding, the unsued community grant, uh, uh, max is five million dollars. So you get five million dollars for that. The balance would be through a low interest loan at an interest rate of one point eight seven percent over twenty years. And the payment, annual payment would be about a little over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, just for reference, grants weren't available for this. You couldn't get the unsued community grant, uh, and, and they were just basically financing with a loan only. Uh, the payment would be a little over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, you know, you know, when you take a look at principal and interest, it's about a three hundred thousand dollar a year savings and stuff, uh, getting the unsued community grant. Uh, the private property work, that's not eligible through the loan program. So that would have to be tackled locally. And then the phase two would be, you know, all the subdivisions and stuff there. Uh, that was just under four million dollars. The unsued community, uh, grant could cover all of that cost. So for the phase two, uh, there would be, if you could acquire the grant for it, uh, there would actually be no loan or anything related to that. It would all be, uh, one hundred percent, uh, grant funded. Um, if you were just financing phase two, it'd be two hundred, roughly two hundred and thirty six thousand dollars a year in annual payment if you had to finance that. So.
Except, except for the private, private.
Except for the private, private. That, that would have to be figured out locally, you know, and stuff. So. Well, it either, either, either the individual customers would do it or I've seen, you know, in some communities where they tried to get um, you know, not necessarily through this program, but trying to get unsued, um, areas onto a village, uh, or city, uh, sewer systems. Sometimes they community comes to bank, you know, and stuff. They just, they get repaid over, over time. So they, they were, whatever the cost, they would get them connected and then they would have a, maybe it's a thirty dollar or forty dollar charge a month, whatever it might be, you know, and stuff until that, that cost is kind of repaid. So. Uh, cost impact to users, um, we just kind of use data from the current village. Uh, average customer uses just under, you know, five thousand gallons per month. Uh, when we did the report, based off the, uh, rates at the time we did the report, average customer for sewer only would pay, uh, twenty seven forty two in the village. Uh, for the phase one, um, project, it would be, uh, seventy eight fifty three. Phase two would be seventy two, uh, forty per month per customer. And that includes the work on the private property as well, just in, just an estimate. Uh, the difference between the, the monthly rate is, is basically just the, you know, all the other charges are the same. It's really just, would vary a little bit for each, each customer, you know, and stuff based off of the amount of sewer work and, and, uh, septic tank abandonment on their individual homes. So gives you just kind of a rough idea of what that costs on. Uh, environmental impacts, we do have to get, uh, clearances for our projects depending on what the environmental impacts might be. The first two we have to do for all of our projects. So the I, I D N R danger species and wetlands. Uh, we have to be in compliance with Illinois Danger Species Act and, uh, the Illinois Natural Preservation Act and the Illinois Wetlands Act. Uh, I D N R reviewed, they concluded the, uh, adverse impacts unlikely. Uh, we also have to get clearance from the, uh, state historic preservation office for section one of six of the National Historic Preservation Act. Uh, and we had no, uh, several determine there's no historic structure or property that would be affected by the prop, uh, project. Uh, we had to go through I D, I D N R Office of Water Resources, uh, for compliance with the Illinois Lakes, Rivers and Stream Act. Um, I D N R determined that the project is authorized to proceed under the statewide permit number eight, which applies to directional boring pipeline that you change across underneath beds of all Illinois rivers, lakes, streams under their jurisdiction. So Killbuck, there's one area where we've got to, uh, take the force main and cross underneath to Killbuck, uh, by directional boring and stuff there. So that's why I D N R was involved there. Uh, U S Army Corps of Engineers, um, they review it for, uh, dredging and filling materials in, uh, rivers, lakes, ponds, large and small streams and wetland areas adjacent to these areas. Uh, U S Army Corps of Engineers, uh, uh, looked at the project and determined that probably nationwide permit, uh, fifty eight for utility line activities for water and other substances would cover the work. And then the last one, uh, this is kind of a new one, probably the last three or four years. Um, we have to do, uh, what they call tribal council consultations. So, uh, where the project's located, we have, there's a database that we have to go into and find out, uh, what, uh, tribal nations might have interest in the project area. And then we have to send them information on the project to get their, their input. Um, any that have received any, uh, comments, but if we do receive any, they would have to be, um, included in the construction documents. And then the project schedule, uh, this, you know, this is, you know, part of it is determined, you know, really by what. And then the project schedule, uh this is, you know, this is, yeah, part of it is determined, you know, really by what or not the village wants to try to proceed and and get some of this grant funding and and part of it is when that village should be eligible for uh some of these grant funds. So uh the earliest really would be, start of construction would be in February of twenty twenty-seven, complete in June of uh twenty twenty-eight for phase one. And then phase two would be uh start construction February twenty twenty-eight and then completes uh construction in June of twenty twenty-nine. And then uh public comments, like I said, we will take uh public comments uh here from any re- uh anybody, uh any public or anybody on the board tonight. And then uh you can always make uh written comments for the ten day uh comment period after this public hearing. Uh they can, they can be addressed to uh the village president with their phone or you can send it directly to Julie Matthews at the Illinois.
So I haven't slept in the.
Yes.
It's arriving, I know. If somebody chooses not to to.
They wouldn't have to, no, no.
So it's not like where the water, if you have a well and there's water and their well looks bad, then they are.
Well, depending on public health, if the septic system goes bad, I'd have to check and see if they would have the same.
Yeah, well, they're quite a hundred foot rule. Just for transparency, if they're within five hundred feet of sewer and their septic goes bad, they would be forced to connect.
By the county.
By the county, yeah, oh, he has that. Just for more clarity, this is the second time we were approached by the Knolls Edge subdivision. First time about two thousand and six, I E P A sent them to us. And part of this was, we'll look into it, this is us looking into it.
Is is, are they willing to pay for their private portion?
No.
They even doing approaching us.
I know, we're not putting out seven million dollars to do this, but.
Yes.
If we we can get grants, by all means, but I don't see the village.
You got the stuff, it's supposed to mean like it would still be five million dollars. Property owners have a share.
And based on, we'll take it forever, it can take you over thirty-one plus years to pay. That doesn't include additional employees, it doesn't include any legal or gonna have.
Both phases or different?
You just pay off some gross.
Just just one.
Based on a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars a year, it's about thirty-one years to pay for it. And that's providing we got the.
Right.
Right.
It's all affordable.
Again, if the state wants to send them to us, the state should be willing to pay for it.
But I say even with the funding, we will still. Uh thirty-one years, but that doesn't include our additional employees, our additional legal, unless the amnization part of the project's been cleaned up. We're gonna run into opposition there, which is gonna cause even more legal issues.
That's kind of misunderstood that too.
Hold on, go ahead, Chris.
It looked like the the was within the state's right of way, then you wouldn't need annexation.
There there is no right of way beyond the boulevard section of seventy-two. Theoretically, the landowners from where the where the road splits around the the median, from there all the way through onto the center of the road.
Edge of the road over.
Center of the road.
Without permission.
The, there's two different things, it's, there's easements and annexations. The annexations is really up to the village, whether they want to have people annexed if they're, if they get get connected. The easements, uh like Brooke said, if you pull up the map again.
Yep.
Uh maybe go to, maybe go to the second and third and that, we'll put more than. Might be a little better scale.
That one?
So yeah, that, we'll start with that one. When you get out, I think it's just the. Make sure I got the right right road there. I think just just east of Killbuck Road, I think that starts where the state actually owns the right of way. So when you get it, when you get into that area, where you see the construction along there and then, you know, even north along the uh on-ramp and stuff there, the state actually owns that property. So all we'd have to do, all the builders would have to do was get a utility permit from I D O T to do the work. Once you move to to the to the west, a little, there might be a section in in there, we'd have to see how those houses on on seventy-two, how that would, how that were planted and everything. Um most of that property going that way, the people own up to the to the center line of the roadway. So on those, technically you need to get you uh utility easements from from the from the property line. I know I've had people ask, you know, and stuff, you had, you had fiber optic people coming in there and they were just putting, they'll come in there and throw fiber optic everywhere, whether it's on state right of way, township, county, you know, and stuff. They just put it in there and usually, usually nobody says anything about it, you know, and stuff, but technically, technically.
That's, that's easier though.
If if anybody.
They would still, they would still need to get me technically still.
And if anybody wanted to stop them, they could have went to a judge and gotten injunction and stuff.
Yep. So that's, that's what we do, you know, and stuff, when we take a look at ownership of the the right of way. If it's, if the state own, if, there's a difference between owning it and it's dedicated right of way. If it's dedicated, you know, and stuff, what what they ruled on in the past is if it was dedicated for roadway purposes, then that's what the dedication was for. If they dedicated the roadway purposes for roadway and called out every every other utility, then you wouldn't, you wouldn't need to get an easement from them. But typically roadway dedication is for roadway only. So if you're gonna put any other utilities in there, that's where you get stuck with, you know, going through and getting easement.
And fifty, fifteen, fifty, fifteen years ago, uh District Two told us that that easement and redoing all those ditches along seventy-two to their new profile like we had to do within the village is within their twenty-year plan. But they don't have any money, so I doubt it's gonna hit twenty-year plan.
Can I say a few things?
About beans.
So I think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse here. This is just exploratory in nature um to determine whether or not this is even a feasible project through anybody's standards and whether it'll be allowable. And I believe at that point, it's our intention to address the state and say, you're asking us to help these other neighboring communities in other areas that need this. So we're, the, I think the intent is that we also ask them to subsidize portions of this.
Couldn't do that on.
And that's kind of.
Absolutely.
And we're, we're gonna be able to handle all the inflow that we're gonna have with what we have now and not put up another.
Wastewater plant.
Wastewater plant or.
Should be able to handle what we have.
And this is only wastewater.
Right. We should be able to handle whatever we would get, but the plant was built with expansion to where it will double its size.
Right, they were supposed to get another stuff, but I mean, that's not in this. You're asking, we would have to expand the plant.
Yeah, I mean, potentially that.
Eventually you have. Soon here, no, something we're gonna have to do again in the future.
We had to put in another ring.
Right, which we have space for and instead of. Obviously, we're talking about punished to do this, let alone and not talk about punished to do that, so.
It's kind of be one in the same though, but again, they've.
It's additional cost.
They need.
They say.
Yeah, they need something from us.
Right.
To they've.
This is the second time they've asked us.
This, and and the funding for this part of the program, you know, through the loan program, there's typically traditional program. You have federal dollars, state match, and then you got everybody kind of repaying and stuff. The state started up this unsued uh uh community grant program and stuff. And and the thing about this is, it's all, this is all state-funded money here. So, you know, you know, problem is, you don't know, you don't, you don't really know how long it's gonna last. So.
Is the state money already allocated for these projects or is this money that they're gonna have to come up with for?
Well, they they first have to approve it.
Right.
Right.
Assuming they have.
And fund it.
Well, that's the idea, and I mean, is there money sitting somewhere where the.
Yeah.
It's funded for already or is it something we're gonna have to figure out later?
And what, whether it's here, we've looked at this in in other, you know, small communities that have, you know, private septic systems and everything else, you know, and stuff, we've we've crunched the numbers, you know, and stuff, I mean, in no place, when you're having to build, you know, in this, in this case, you're just building sewers, lift stations, you have the treatment plant in place. Some of these other real small rural communities that, there's still a few out here that that are all on septic tank drain field systems. You know, even those small communities and stuff, it's, it's nearly impossible for them to to get a sewer system and and either treatment or regionalization option, you know, and stuff, without this grant funding. I mean, it's literally, even with the grant funding, it's difficult, right? And, you know, with this, with this project, when you take a look at phase one and two together, you know, what we've, what we got on there, roughly a two and a half million dollar donor hole there, you know, and stuff, I mean, there's two and a half million that we have to need to come for and and gang funds.
And like I said, any sewer wastewater plant that starts getting to capacity as well.
Yep, so.
You know, it, anybody that's gone, um been sitting on this board for any length of time, know it's been my goal to get water and sewer out of thirty-nine and seventy-two. But that's not a practical number.
It's never gonna get more practical though either.
Oh, no. No, it's no aid, it was eight million dollars and that was water and sewer, now we're eight million dollars just sewer.
Yeah, so.
So.
People would be, they're sitting there, we're calling up for money. States, state and federal grants are not, if not, you can't afford it, so.
Well, yeah, it's, it's similar to the, to Chris's point, it's similar to the, you know, lead service line replacement. Obviously, you don't have to worry about that here because of the newer water system, but a lot of these, a lot of these small communities are dealing with the lead service line replacements and and uh the only way they can afford to get them done is is through capital funding. And they're just pouring money into that program to to try to get rid of those load service lines.
Rick, we close the rear. I'm trying to figure out, I can't even guess them. How long is the village gonna be in the red on something like this?
Well, we're not gonna do it unless the state pays for it. And that would have even involved whether or not the people would allow us to do it.
True. That's all to prove it. But the state of Illinois gets a lot of financial problems. And if they leave us, if if we say that we're gonna try to do something, okay? And then the state backs out and we're lost, we're down there.
No, we wouldn't do it without a written agreement from the state, same way we've waited for this uh rebuild down down.
I I would like to see us offer these people's water and we get it so that we can generate some rhythm and 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 get something going. I just don't want to be in the red and 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 have our um um future monies dependent on people that we can control, whether it's the federal government or the state.
Well, again, I don't, I don't see the village doing it short of so somebody phoning up the money and um getting those permissions for us, because it's not gonna happen.
Well, I'm.
Not without state.
I I'd be hard put to. I would really be pressed to, um, of good David Jones and I'm willing for this.
Agreed. I think everybody here agrees with that.
One hundred percent.
Thank you.
I'll let you decide how relaxed you want to go, because nobody signed up to speak and present testimony for the public hearing. So if you want to ask the public if they have anything they want to say, I just need their name, but nobody signed up to be sworn in to give testimony.
Go ahead.
Why? That, that's, okay, I know you weren't here to begin.
I I don't care, if somebody wants to speak, speak, I don't.
Yeah, um, that's his, that's his shit, I need you and my shit. Are you gonna let William speak?
Go ahead, William.
I disagree about the right of way and the group ownership or even may have a property out there, and I don't own the center of the road. G I S confirms that, and if you pull up Google Maps, you'll see the right of way marker in my property that's about probably fifty, sixty feet from the center of the road in my.
G I S did, G I S did that about four years ago, they went through the maps and changed them.
My survey does not put me to the center of the road.
Well, to be right, I mean, there there there's some properties where, depending on transfer and stuff, maybe for some instance, they 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 transferred ownership to to the state, we have to go through, down through there, there could be some spot areas where um it could be right that is, people don't own to the center lines. I'm thinking the majority of them do, but.
First, number one question of the village is, does the village currently have any debt?
No, not as far as I'm, I know, do we? No, we have reserved, we have that kind of money.
This is their first, sure. My other question, who's paid for all this work up into this plant?
The rest, the grant.
The grant fund?
Yeah, all grant, one hundred percent.
The state paid for it.
So I guess I misunderstood in the announcement, based on what you're reading now, there's a grant and a loan option. Is that what I'm understanding, there's a grant, potentially with five million, and then the option for an I E P loan?
Yeah, currently the unsued uh community's construction grant, the the planning grant we got paid for for this. The construction grant is a max of five million dollars, that's why we broke it into two phases so we could, we could get five million for phase one and then we we're, uh, the the second phase is under the five million, so basically we could get a hundred percent grant for the uh for the second phase. The problem is, a phase one was over that, over that five million dollar threshold, we get. The the problem of trying to break phase one out to something less, you know, and stuff is E P is gonna probably have some heartburn if we, if we go three phases and the first phase is just a lift station and force main and maybe some sewer that it's not gonna pick up anybody. So we're trying to at least do two phases where we're at least picking up some of the unsued commu- uh unsued uh customers in phase one and some in phase, phase two, so.
Um, I hear themes on page four. Where the, their current average customer through bills, twenty-seven dollars, forty-two cents, with an average of four thousand nine hundred eighty-five gallons per month. And then you outline phase one and phase two customer value sewer. Is that phase one and phase two are charges only for people in the expansion area or is it for everybody that would be?
That would be just on the expansion area, I believe. Because they have to.
What page were you looking at, William?
Page four.
Yeah, they're, they're paying the same base rate of usage charge and then um everybody in the phase one, phase two would be, would be repaying the the debt charge, you know, and stuff in phase one. So, you know, you got, phase two doesn't get off the hook for no debt charge, you know, and stuff, they're still paying the debt on the phase uh phase one improvements and stuff there. And then the big, big chunk of it is the private sewer service charge. That was uh thirty-seven twenty in phase one and thirty-one dollars a month in phase two. So a bulk of the, bulk of the sewer bill is just the work on the private property.
So then, if I understand that right, a resident in, I don't know, was it Fairlane?
Timberlane.
Timberlane, yep.
Timberlane, yeah. They would see a phase one portion and a phase two portion.
No, it's not combined, not combined.
Not.
No, it's not combined. So if you're in phase one, it would be seven, seventy-eight fifty-three, phase two would be seventy-two forty, you don't add them together, sorry.
Okay, so phase.
Everyone along round seventy-two, on phase one would pay seventy-eight fifty-three.
Yep.
And then everybody in the residential areas of Knollwood, Timberlane and Merriman would see a subsidized fee by everybody in phase one and they would give a cheaper rate, but they're using more of the service.
No, no, everybody's, everybody, the debt that you see on phase one, that two and a half million dollar debt payment, uh, ours are. Uh, so on page three, where I have the phase one annual payment of a hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars a year for the loan on on phase one, everybody in phase one and phase two, all those customers are paying off that that debt, so they're all getting it. The only difference, the only difference, the reason why there's a difference in the rate, and and these are just estimates, it's based off of how, how many feet of sewer service we thought we're gonna have to do on each customer's uh property and stuff. So the difference is, is kind of the the work on the, on the private property. So if you hand this document here, private sewer service charge, so that's the work on the private property for phase one was thirty-seven twenty and phase two was thirty-one oh seven, so there's roughly a six dollar difference in in charge for the work on the private property. Everything on the, on the public side, all those customers are paying the same.
Have to pick yourself saying that not only phase one people pay phase one, or pay two people pay phase two, but then you just said everybody will pay phase one. Have to pick yourself saying that not only phase one people pay phase one, phase two people pay phase two, but then you just said everybody will pay phase one.
If if I did, my mistake. Everybody, every, all the customers in phase one and phase two are paying for that. Loan that we would have to have to pay for on the phase one improvements. Because phase two people are gonna be using the phase one improvement as well.
Would I be would I be correct in this than saying that? If the state wanted to come up with the other four point one million dollars, that that those extra fees wouldn't be there?
That is correct. If we can, if we get, if we get rid of the two and a half million and. And low, then then there's no, there's really no no. Infrastructure cost improvements and stuff there, then you're just dealing with the the work on the on the private property.
Which who's gonna pay?
That's where.
That's the that's the question.
That's the question. The problem, the problem is right now, there's just no grant programs out there for for work on on the private property.
This might not be a question you can answer, but you said the county has an ordinance or rule of a five hundred foot. Yes, five hundred foot from the property edge or five hundred foot from the home or the septic field? My home is pretty sparse setback.
I believe I believe it's from the problem.
I'm guessing.
The other thing is for a lot of that run is forced main and you're not connecting to forced main.
So if you wanna pay a one time fee or seven grand, thanks.
The only, I should say, the only program out there that would that would pay for. And and we'd have to take a look and see if any if if that area would qualify. The only program that I'm aware of that would. Pay for the work on the private property would be uh the D C O uh Community Development Block Grant Program. We use that. When we did the sewers here in town, uh the problem problem there is you gotta do the income surveys and then not everybody would qualify. It would really only be, you know, the the residents that would qualify, you know, income wise and stuff that would get. And and that wouldn't be one hundred percent. They they do have a, they do have a cap that they pay for water and they do have a cap that they pay for sewer. On private property, so it probably wouldn't be one hundred percent, but there there would be a program out there that potentially they could, we could try to get money for work on the private property.
Even that seventy eight dollars fifty three cents, I rounded up, you know, for a year, you're talking nine hundred and sixty dollars for sewers. They cost me about three hundred and fifty dollars on my septic pump line every three.
When Loves came in, they offered us a million dollars bring water and sewer out. I mean, you see, you see by the cost how.
I'll pee in the grass.
How much can people out forty five grand? Go out to forty five grand?
They're all engineered systems out there.
Now, when it goes bad, that's when the people wanna get out.
And and my my experience with the with the, my experience with the Department of Public Health is is we we looked at. We had a community that was unsued and I mean, when you took a look at it, I mean, we had, we had letters of support from the. County Health Department, uh you know, first, you know, big, because I mean, these were small lots. It was bad soil, um but but at the end of the day.
Fair deal will happen again. They will waive their requirements.
At the end of the day, at the end of the day, my experience is Department of Public Health, they're not going to condemn the house and throw people out on. On the street, you know, and stuff. They're gonna, they're gonna issue interference, like it or not, and people are gonna keep, keep that, you know, and stuff. I mean, it's. Just the way it is.
Chris, I would challenge you to find out from the county exactly how many permits are applied for for replacement of things.
Oh, I don't think many. Just because they're aging doesn't mean they're done. Right? It's just a matter of time.
Do we know the population of the affected areas in question?
No, just a number of, you know, we're gonna take three people per household, you know, hundred forty three.
In theory.
Or twenty six.
Outside of the request from the state, has there been any analysis done to support the need for this infrastructure out there? Is there any documents studied done that actually says this is a need?
Uh, so one of the communities in question here is a one.
One well now.
Is a one well, and so the communities out there are in a position where they've asked us to look into this.
Can I just ask you to speak louder?
Yep, no, so uh one of the communities out there has shown a need on the water side, so I um. I would guess that the sewer is not far behind on that. That's the one that I've personally spoken with.
But is there any study done that the village went back to and say, this, this justifies the needs?
No, it's just that we were asked to look into it. State was willing to pay for it. We looked into it.
How can, how can David Johnson enter into the Monroe Center's D C?
We wouldn't. Our F P A goes to limestone road.
I'd have, I'd have to look.
I'm sure I said it there.
I'd have to look. It's been a long time ago.
Back when Cheryl was president.
I I think those, I think those, I have to look, those boundaries might already be set.
That's what I.
Because I think, I think there's, I think there's, I think there was some arguments back in the day when when they were initially looking at it and.
But that's all.
Yeah.
Ultimately, my final question is. Who's the authority having jurisdiction out there? It's local county, correct? There's no municipality out there. It's not, David Johnson's down in Rose Center, right?
It's all coming back.
So I don't see this as uh David Johnson needing to put on their Superman cape and extending. Miles down the road to solve a problem that doesn't exist currently.
He just likes the plates.
That's good. They gave you one.
It's it's, I'm with you guys. If the state wants to throw a crap ton of money at it, I would, I would say reconsider, but even at that point, I don't even know why. Uh, the maintenance on that system alone and it's gonna exceed the. It's going to exceed the service cost that the village is going to gain on it. Outside of.
And and beyond that, the state has to.
Annexation directly to the interstate down there, it doesn't benefit the village to be out there.
The other thing the state would have to do is get permissions. Or rent.
And I want sewer, when you do my connection to my property, I want it to the western, the farthest point of my property.
Well, being that these numbers are high and we're probably not gonna do this anytime in my lifetime, um.
If you can connect to the farthest point of my property, I might get on board.
Anybody else wanna speak? Board members? Engineers?
I did just look it up, but only the, William, can you answer your question? The boundary agreement with Monroe Center does go to limestone. And actually, not even all of limestone, part of limestone. Yeah, but it starts, it starts north of the gas station, all that area, but that's where their boundary is.
M C said there's the Blackwood. Can we count her?
No, there's nothing there. If nobody else says anything. Oh, a motion to close, yes.
Alan makes a motion to close the public hearing. Chris seconded before he finished. All in favor, say aye. Me opposed, same sign. Six fifty nine, we're out of the close.
Did you say we're out of close session?
Yeah. All right. We have to reconvene or we just end it?
Nope, you're good.
Beautiful, Matt?
All right, back to me. Uh, may I quit the funding status report?
Take your conversation outside, thank you. You only got a few more weeks, William.
Uh, Junction Way reconstruction. See the contracts back from I dot, reach out to set up a pre-construction meeting. Uh, not much activity there, uh kind of rebuild downtown Main Street. Obviously, you got the awards made tonight. We did get uh our D C O pool for the. Do digitalization.
Oh, you didn't wanna share.
Uh, and then we've got uh. Plan scheduled for the uh planning zone today on the eighth. Uh, going to prove on the twenty second. Dale did email. I did turn off I have hard copies for game.
Yay, I do.
Revised.
They are the revised ones?
Yes, the revised one.
Yes, I I know that there's going to be a landowner coming to look for them. I just needed bigger ones than what I've got.
Okay, if you need additional, I can get it. Um, then our. Park improvements and stuff, um. Uh, our M E P guy's working back. Uh, he had some health issues and stuff, so in fact, we should. Should be able to get some things ready for bidding here by mid April. Uh, we did submit our uh grant and extension diving our. So just waiting to hear back on on that. So I think they also did just one item related to the, to the uh splash pad.
Okay, sorry, Matt.
I think they're, they also, there might be just uh one uh one final decision I thought the splash pad for for the votes to make, so. Please for your committee, so. And uh the water treatment plant, the filter rehabilitation uh project, you did get a proposal back from. Tonka Water for kind of a complete uh project before that, the proposal just included the materials, so. Um, to rehab it, uh the existing one, with all the uh labor complete was just under. Four hundred thousand dollars and then just for, I asked for it just to kind of give you some perspective, um. To basically just replace that filter with a with a new one, um it's eight hundred two thousand, so that is just the. Equipment that is not. Dumping, dumping the old one and putting the new one in, so you can kind of, you can kind of see the cost difference between the two.
Four hundred is. Half the price of the others?
Yes, and 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 the eight oh two doesn't include everything.
Say that again?
The eight oh two doesn't include everything, the the the, just under the four hundred thousand, that is for. Materials and labor, everything to complete, complete the project. The eight oh two uh is basically just for the. New filter.
Okay, so I do have this as a separate line item, but if we can talk about it now too, but I have a question too. I know that Rick works in an industry and Fergie and Chris where you get to a point where there's a percentage of repair. That exceeds the percentage of replacement and what is that percentage?
Some things we do it at seventy five, depending on what it is. But on this, you're fifty, you're fifty percent without even adding labor into it. Of demolition and and reconstruction. That's everything.
How long is it?
The matter of. Here's what you said last time, this this repair was twenty or thirty years, potential life?
I I would say you're gonna at least get another fifteen to twenty, because we're gonna be able to paint the inside of it, the and and repair the the actual steel structure. I mean. When you look at it, you're gonna, you're gonna gut everything out out of this thing.
That's, that that would be mine, because the the missing return would be if you if you're only gonna five years, you put four hundred thousand, you might as well replace it.
They won't, we'll confirm, we'll confirm with with Tonka and get their their input and on it as well, then. Cause right now, we got an area, we got an area that we can't get at to repair and we can't get at to paint. And we go with the rehabilitation, what they're gonna do is take out that that under drain portion. So basically, you're, you think about it, you know, the under drain and the filter section are two separate sections. When they do this, the under drain uh plate's coming out, so these two sections become one now. And now you got some area to get into where you can, you can, we can weld and try to find the areas that are, you know, in the base plate that are, that are leaking. Repair those and then you got enough room in there to to blast and paint the steel structure, just like we would your, your water tower. But right now, like I said, right now, without without those modifications, you can't get, you can't get at those areas that are troublesome. It's just the nature of the. The design of the.
Try, trust, technique. It's not like it's a mystery.
No. And we can, we can do some, before we make any decision, before we make any decision, you know, and stuff, we we'll get references, you know, and stuff from. Where they've done this before, the similar filters, you know, and stuff and and if we be, you know, we can take, go. Fergie, we can take a filter, go take a look at it, talk to the operators, take a look at their end product, let's see what they say.
So I think part of the reason that we needed to have a discussion on this is we needed to know kind of the thoughts for budgeting purposes. Because we are working on our budget right now and there's a massive difference between four hundred thousand and a million. The, well, yeah, eight hundred plus, and so we kind of needed to know what direction the board was looking towards and so. If the board isn't looking towards rehabilitation, pending Matt confirming a few things and that. Confirming that this is the right direction, then I would like to plug in that as the preliminary, preliminary number that we're working at for budget.
Yes.
This is a timeframe for them to do this work, like how long is the project?
I think another question is whether you wanna, you know, you know, it's a big costly item, whether you wanna, you know. Kind of cash fund the thing or whether you wanna go through the loan program, you know, and stuff. You wanna go through the loan program, you know, unfortunately, it's gonna. You're probably gonna be a year and a half out, you know, and stuff before you can start construction, but.
Negative. Is the problem now before its convergence here?
And then also remember too, that there is going to be a a decent amount of money spent on the temp.
That would be there whether you were.
No, I I'm just saying, don't worry, everybody's focused on four hundred thousand dollars.
Fergie's right, yep, Fergie's right, yeah.
Filter is no car list, either choice.
It doesn't matter. I'm just saying, everybody's focused on whatever. It's not just.
We love the temporary filter in there, Fergie's correct.
That could have to do with whether or not you get a loan. It doesn't have anything to do with that like money or something.
Yes, no, it doesn't matter how we go about this, that is still gonna be there. It's just, remember that as well, keep that in the back of your head, so.
I mean, if you, if you, if you want us to kind of, you know, kind of uh. Take a look at the rehabilitation, take a look at some sites, I'll reach out to Tonka, I'll see what they've come in for and. If Fergie wants to take a drive, we'll take a drive, look at them.
I don't wanna be the first person to try.
No, they've done it before.
And I remember that.
Yep, yep, they have done this before.
And as long as it's, you know, it's a decent process and that's going to give us another fifteen to, let's say ten to twenty years. Then that to me is worth the money as opposed to if you're gonna spend four hundred dollars and get five years and then jump around and have to replace it, any. That that would be the minimum issue you're carrying.
Is there a guarantee from Tonka that this will fix the problem once they do all this stuff? I mean, do we have like a. I don't know, a guarantee of work? Like, I mean, I would hate for them to get in there, do all this work, we plug it in and then also.
You're literally, I mean, I'm not speaking of there, but with what is proposed, what I read at least, you're literally, you're eliminating the. Problem. I mean, the the back, the rusted model, all that is going away.
Is is, yeah, it's theory, so once they get everything, you know, liquidate, I don't know, craftsmanship or work or something.
They're taking that bottom out, which is leaking.
Right, and then they're putting in the, they're fixing it and putting in the new one or whatever, so.
Concrete, right? As as I recall, it was concrete and then. Yep, I think it's fine. Do we have a consensus on what way we like?
Nobody's holding you to that right now, but we need direction.
Good with training, repair, build. You good with repair as our preliminary goal?
You know. Then would you take that?
No, I'd like to look at the repair first. They've done other ones in the same way, but Matt, so.
Your only way out, if you don't do anything and you wait for it to dry, you've got your emergency money with great down track.
That's a lot of money for an emergency. We really don't wanna go there. Run the failure is the most expensive form of maintenance. Other things to go.
Yes. It's more seamless, not tell.
Okay.
Um, couple more items real quick. Uh, we did, we did go ahead and recently met the M P S permit. I know uh. Uh, I think Jason was getting a vote on the E P A. We got the, oddly, we got the. Uh, I think Jason was getting approached from EPA, we, we got the, oddly, we got the return receipt back, but when I got the return receipt back. I didn't see where, usually they have a stamp or signed by EPA and I didn't see that on the return receipt, so. We resubmitted the stuff that I was telling. Nightfall permit request, uh, the entrance cover still needs to be installed. And then the solar, um, I think all of the concerns have been addressed and stuff there and then. Uh, we're, they're just working with the uh, Ogle County Soil and Water uh, District on regardless uh, CD when the maintenance.
We are almost done with that, almost.
And then uh, uh, we, we need to add these, Dale just added these to the thing, things that he's working on. Cost estimates for uh, uh, John and Brett on uh, Edson uh, road reconstruction slash mill. An overlay A two, so we must be looking at all those different options. Junction Road aggregate shoulder improvements and Village Street assessment, so just giving some budget costs for those, so. They seem like they're, need to be added to the list, we'll get them added here in the next kind of one six.
Alright, moving on to committees, Jen.
Um, we had a husband centennial meeting before this, um, we are still working on some things and reworking some things. Sign some contracts, anybody else have anything they want to say? For that meeting?
No.
I'm working on the Easter egg hunt, um, on April twelve. Polkham State Bank doing their refreshments, the cookies and stuff, and then um, I have a DJ booked for that also.
Who's playing the rabbit?
I'm sorry, we don't talk about that during publicly recorded meetings.
Yeah.
The Easter bunny be attending is the question?
Thanks. Maybe he sees no fluid. Changes from sand to rabbit during the season.
The same.
Okay, moving on.
Chris.
Yeah, as far as I.
And, and apparently we're working on the, on the budget for next year, not we, cause I'm not.
No. We're still trying to figure out what goes in it before we go to show with Danny Matt.
It's gonna be tight, so people need to cut.
It is. Yeah, we're gonna, we'll, we need like a red.
We'll just use a spray can. Anything further, Chris? Bill? Nathan?
Uh, make a motion approving installation of the Eagle Scout Gaga Ball Pit Project as proposed. Park on Auto World Drive and donation fifty percent of the project cost not to exceed five hundred. I'm going to sustain from conversating in this.
Probably best.
But in that, Cody discussed what this is about.
Hold on, anybody need the airbrush?
Nathan made a motion to approve the Eagle Scout Gaga Ball Pit Project to host park on Auto World Drive. Not to exceed five hundred dollar donation from the village. John seconded?
Sure.
Yes, he did.
Okay, John seconded. Now we can have discussion and you can either. Oh, it's like an octagon pit.
Fun with that.
This is like a wooden octagon that they get in, but it's not UFC, it's dodgeball.
I believe this one is uh. But yeah. It's, it's a game that's been used for a long time and.
If you are gonna step out, you can either recuse yourself or you can abstain.
Well, seeing as he made the motion, we should, he should probably withdraw the motion and then somebody else make the motion. Thank you, William. Alright, somebody else should make that motion.
Making Rose Rose's motion.
Park Auto World Drive not to exceed five hundred dollars, it's being created for by the.
John makes a motion to approve the Eagle Scout Gaga Ball Pit Project, proposed at the Park on Auto World Drive not to exceed five hundred dollar donation from the village, Chris seconds. If you abstain and the vote goes, your vote goes with the majority. If you recuse, your vote doesn't count at all. You don't get to vote.
He can probably abstain now, because recusing, he has no financial interest in this.
I don't know if it's personal interest or, it doesn't matter anyway, just wanna give him the options.
Are you ready for roll call then?
I am.
Patrick?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jen? Bill?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
Nathan?
Motion passage seven seventeen.
I lost my, my, my worksheet. Hold on a second, we got it, I can read this one, so. I make a motion to approve additional compensation for Noah Clarin of one dollar per hour to be added to the next pay period of his. Of his then effectively higher wage of acquisition of general standards pesticides license. Upon proof of acquisition of license to human resources manager.
Second.
Nathan makes a motion to approve compensation, compensation increase for Noah Clarin of one dollar. Jen seconds, per hour. On proof of completion of the general standard pesticides. Yes. And Jen seconded?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Uh, this is just another raise for uh, Noah, he's been uh, continuing to be a great way for us and stuff, so uh. Trying to keep him on longer and uh, rewarding for, you know, Boston ass was.
You can watch worse things on YouTube.
That, that word is okay.
We've heard the discussion.
Very good.
Too many people talking.
Further discussion? I have money, roll call.
Chris?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Bill?
Yeah.
John? Nathan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Motion passes seven nineteen.
Just keeping on our park projects, you know, all those wonderful things that go on, hopefully it lasts and stuff, very, very soon for you guys to report into. Um, further, I'd like to complete my comment.
John?
As discussed at the March tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting, it was suggested that the board ratify the approval of the resolution approving and authorizing coke from Bobcat. Of Rockford, not Johnson Tractor, for the purchase of lawnmower and a belt and suspender approach to the. Schneiber here on the agenda and resolution. That being said, I'll make a motion to ratify approval. On March eleventh, twenty twenty-five, a resolution number twenty-five dash ten, a resolution approving and authorizing execution of coke from Bobcat. Rockford for purchase of the motor lawnmower, the public first department streets in the amount of nine thousand two hundred sixty-one dollars and seventy-two cents after trading.
Alright, John makes a rat, motion to approve the ratification of resolution number twenty-five dash ten. Resolution approving and authorizing execution of coke from Bobcat of Rockford, which we originally said was the wrong uh, vendor. And the amount of nine thousand two hundred sixty-one dollars and seventy-two cents after trading. Nathan seconds. Discussion? Roll call.
Jen?
Yes.
Bill?
Yeah.
John? Nathan?
Yes.
Patrick? Chris?
Yes.
Patrick's at seven point. Anything further, John?
Yeah, thank you Sandy, I do like the agenda, I'm somewhere important, that is, that is, that is very well, very well done for us, I think uh. The summary was what I read first and then what we need to say, rather than have us, what he said that we've done. Through all the years, which is worse, but this, you know, it looks a little cleaner, thank you.
Thanks. He did himself. I will not.
If we got any to work?
Thank you.
I will.
Twenty-five dash twelve, resolution approving and authorizing execution of the bowl overall testing. First corporation for geotechnical exploration for spill pad, waste of treatment plan. In the amount not to exceed four thousand nine hundred ninety dollars or up to two boring.
Patrick makes a motion to approve resolution number twenty-five dash twelve and not to exceed forty-nine hundred ninety dollars. John seconds. Discussion, spill pad?
Kind of just an outline so that Charles knows or the public and Fergie or Pat can fill in. Uh, this is just for the geotechnical part of the spill pad that was previously authorized to be drafted by McMahon. They just need to do two soil borings or potentially two so, up to two soil borings at two different locations to check the land. Prior to then finishing the drawings and the design of the spill pad. I think that's what I wrote in there.
This was in there, it was all, it was uh, obviously our engineers estimate what, because we had the source of the. Geotechnics on ourselves, it's all this, make sure the ground is on.
Same words, question?
Soft ground.
Bill?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Nathan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Jen?
Yes.
Pass at seven twenty-three. Any, anything further, Patrick? All quiet? Any, what, have you think on economic development? Unfinished business?
I think uh, later this week upon approval, I think we'll be setting the LRV up to our turn to begin. So I think that we're almost on a, all on the same page on proving yet, it just needs to go through a little uh, finer tune. Line up, line item and then we'll be ready.
Anybody get a hold, or do we know Dan got a hold of anybody?
He hasn't gone to us at all, but he did his favor.
Can one of you two follow up?
He's definitely old, they're not doing it. It's true, they want, we want.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Patrick? Yeah.
Next meeting. The evening, I have that now coming out and it will be time back to you that moment.
Anything further unfinished business? Public?
Oh, that made it one more thing. The naming of the ten acre park, while it has Nathan's name next to it, uh, the next step in that was on Brenda's. Plate and Brenda, I believe is moving that to DM's plate tomorrow, so he has to rest the information needed to prepare the resolution for you. No, Brenda never talks. No, 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 the graffiti is on you and Jen. Nice try. Yes. That's, we need direction.
I'll do that. I got it.
Anything further from the board members?
Oh, hold on, the public, you gotta go back to the public, back on the public.
Public? Alright, John makes a motion to adjourn. Patrick seconds. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign.
I'm telling you.
Seven twenty-five.
Yeah, what's up?